I would like to welcome everybody to the Northborough School Committee Open Meeting of Wednesday, April 5th, 2017. And we will begin with a public hearing on the fiscal year 18 budget. The Northborough School Committee's fiscal year 2018 approved budget will be read as identified by expenditures in accordance with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Fund Code categories. A copy of the line item budget is included in the packet, and copies of the public hearing document are available at the meeting. Once the voted and approved budget is read, the Northborough School Committee will entertain questions, close the public hearing, and move to the next agenda item. And with that...
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Well, this evening is an annual event. It always precedes the town meeting, and as we know, the town meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 24th. And so I will begin the public hearing meeting on the FY 2018 operational budget. The Northborough Committee, School Committee, is committed to providing an excellent education by approving an educationally sound and fiscally responsible budget in collaboration with town government. Each year, the Northborough School Committee identifies its budget priorities, and those priorities serve to create a framework for discussions and decisions which take place throughout the budget process. A copy of the FY 2018 public hearing document and School Committee voted and approved line item budget are available this evening. They are also available on our district website, and we've distributed copies of both to the town offices here in Northborough. And certainly, you can always call Central Office, and we'd be happy to mail you a copy. As part of the public hearing this evening, I will be providing the total of the FY 2018 School Committee approved budget by functional categories of expenditures as required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Function Code 1000, District Leadership and Administration, represents the Northborough School District's apportionment of general administration, district administration, finance, and administrative services, $733,579. Function 2000, Instructional Services, represents school building leadership, teaching salaries, professional development for teachers and support staff, general supplies, instructional resources and equipment, instructional technology, guidance, and counseling, $12,129,766. Function 3000, Other Student Services, includes attendance, health services, transportation, food services, and student body activities, including athletics and activities, $958,233. It is worth noting that this account is also offset by student fees, which total $36,000 based on the activity and student sports fee. The total amount budgeted for that student body activity again is 26,000, is 36,000. Function 4000, Operation and Maintenance of Plant, includes custodial services, heating of buildings, utility services, maintenance of grounds, maintenance of our buildings, food services, network, and telecommunications for our infrastructure, $1,697,692. Function 5000, Fixed Charges, includes rentals and leases and additionally, this year, contractual obligations as we are still in negotiations with our associations, $697,717. Function 9000, Programs with Other School Districts, which include the transfer of payments to other school districts or non-public schools for services provided to students residing in the sending city or town. There are no additional dollars reflected in the 2018 budget. However, we are now moving into the special education costs, which are parallel the same fund codes as the regular ed portion of the budget. So those items by fund code included in the 2018 budget are as follows. Fund 1000, Legal Services and Administrative Technology, $29,200. 2000, Instruction, includes the district's apportionment of Director of Student Support Services, Assistant Director of Student Support Services, teaching salaries, special ed, professional development, instructional materials, and psychological services, $5,241,779. Function Code 3000, Other Student Support Services, including transportation and health services, $849,727. Function 4000 is Maintenance of Equipment, $9,300. Function 5000, Fixed Costs for Lease Agreements, $2,186. And Function 9000, as described earlier, Non-Public School Programs, $1,095,838. Representing a total FY 2018 operational budget, $23,445,17. This budget amount represents an overall increase from last year of $725,174, representing a 3.19% increase. That concludes the reading of the 2018 budget.
So with that, I will open it up to the audience for any questions. Hearing none. Any questions from my colleagues? I will then close the public hearing of the reading of the budget, and we will move on to the next agenda item. So we have the Action on the Minutes from our last meeting of March 1, 2017.
I move that we accept the meeting in minutes from Wednesday, March 1, 2017.
Second?
Any comments, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. And we will move on to New Business, where we have a presentation by the Lincoln Street School PTO.
Always a highlight on our agenda.
Love this stuff.
PTO's and school improvement plans presented.
Are we doing the PTO first?
It's on the agendas first?
Yes.
Really?
And then we'll do the improvement plan.
Yep.
Thank you.
Same exact spots as last.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us here. We're Jen and Jen. And Jen's and Jen's.
Wow. Triple J's.
If you remember this routine from last year, it's a little similar, but we've mixed it up a little bit. No, we are very thankful to be another year into this and working with this great team here. And we're really excited this year. We just had our evening PTO meeting last week, and it is our highest attended meeting of the year. And it was really great because it gave us a time to sit back and reflect on everything we've implemented from two years ago, and now we can really see how far we've come. So we're happy to report that this year, we are well ahead of our budget. A couple of years ago, when Jen and I joined forces, we surveyed parents and faculty at Lincoln Street and really got a feel for what they were interested in doing and how they wanted to create a community. And here we are, two years later, and we have, we are exceeding our fundraising efforts. We have cut back on our big box fundraisers, and we're doing a lot more in terms of family fun events, family fun nights, doing what parents are looking for. They want to get their kids out of the house, into school, with their friends, having a good time. So it's been nice to really see this come to fruition over the last two years. Some of the other things that we typically do to encourage our family and community time together is our Spooktacular Fun Day every October, our Bingo Night, which we just had a couple of months ago, which we'll talk more about, that was quite an exciting evening, our Restaurant Nights, we have a Red Sox Night coming up, we have a PTO end-of-year pizza party. So really, it's very little that parents and families are having to do, other than come to the school, be part of something, and the events pretty much just run themselves.
We found that, as Jen said, we wanted to cut back on those big fundraisers, like the wrapping paper and the bags and things like that, which we've tried and were successful. But we decided that if we were focusing our efforts on fewer events, then we could really maximize our profits. So our Spooktacular Fun Day is right around Halloween. I have to say, as some of the schools are now gearing up for their school fairs, we're quite thankful that we're already past that. We shortened the amount of time, so it used to be about five hours, so now we're around the four-hour mark, which seems to be better. And we've also really increased our efforts on the silent auction and also raffle baskets. The silent auction has a number of items that the teachers have donated in terms of their time, so an indoor recess with a second grade teacher, or painting with the art teacher...
Holiday baking with a couple of teachers will join together and do a baking event or cupcake decorating.
Yep. I think there was a Beatles event with the music teacher, invite some friends and listen to Beatles music during lunch. That huge hit and a big moneymaker for us. Bingo Night, as Jen said, was a lot of fun. We had a great emcee. A dad was just a great emcee and really made the night a lot of fun. And the teachers are our bingo callers, so they really get into the spirit of things. This year, we did something a little bit unusual. We had our spring scholastic book fair kick off the night of bingo, which was a little chaotic in terms of finding volunteers, but it gave parents an extra chance to preview the book fair or make purchases. So it, just a little bit more exposure, I think, rather than having to stop at the school to make purchases or send money in with your child. So that was something sort of different that we tried, and it seemed to work because we did a fairly good job on our spring book fair this year. We also brought back our Read-A-Thon, which we had taken a break from because the administration of it was difficult. So this year, we moved to an online tracking for the kids, which they really seemed to like. They sort of got these owl avatars and...
Yeah, it was very much an engaging process for the kids, and thankfully, you know, the kids are using so many online tools now that parents didn't have to be such a huge part of it. But parents knew what was going on and gave the overall permissions. But yes, it was a really good event in which the kids, they would go in and every day change certain features of their owl avatars, and it allowed the students to reach out to families or friends that might be a little farther away. So there was some extra fundraising effort that went in there. But the great thing about it was grandparents in Colorado could see what the kids were reading and doing and comment on it and say, "Great job." So even some of the feedback from family members from afar were like, "This is really cool. I can see what my grandkids are doing," you know, 800 miles away or whatever. So that was a very positive, and I think for the teachers and the school, a fairly easy and straightforward process.
That was also kicked off by a group of Algonquin athletes who came to Lincoln Street and read a book to each class. We had athletes in each classroom. The PTO funded books that would be read by these athletes, and then those classes kept those new copies of the books. And the athletes had promised to come back if we met our minutes goal, which we did, 53,000 minutes.
Yep.
So we met that goal, so now we're in the process of planning an event to bring the athletes back as a reward. So that was really great. And then, separate from the PTO, I think everyone heard that Malcolm Mitchell came to Lincoln Street last week or two weeks ago. So we just sort of liked that this theme has emerged, that reading is important no matter what. So no matter what you want to do, reading is the key to success. So that theme sort of emerged. I'm not sure we thought that it would emerge that way, but it did, and we've been really excited about that.
Well, and I think that's always been one of Jen's thoughts, you know, athletes and reading, and how do we get kids to understand that, you know, reading comes into play no matter what you're doing, where you are, what stage of life you're at. And it's true, we've had some really exciting movement around reading and literacy, and I think the kids are starting to see it now. They're starting to see that pattern and that trend.
And as far as our other fundraisers, everything that I just mentioned, we have been able to use as our main fundraisers. And then our Restaurant Nights, which we tend to schedule maybe once every three weeks, sometimes just once a month, sometimes twice a month. But we have a wonderful mom who schedules our Restaurant Nights around town, and we do a really good job of promoting them so people may get into sort of a night out with friends. Her husband works for Direct Energy, and Direct Energy has agreed to match what we bring in for Restaurant Nights up to $1,500, and we're on target to make that amount. So we should make at least $3,000 just with our Restaurant Nights alone this year. And that's just such a simple way. We just promote it as take a night off from meal planning and go out and meet up with friends and have some fun.
Yeah. Going back to some of the feedback from two years ago, people were like, "We'll do whatever, but just make it easy, make it fun." And it's true, you'll find groups of pockets and groups of families at Casa Vallarta or the 99 or wherever, and they're just, you know, the kids are at one table, the adults at another, and everybody's having a good time.
Everybody's happy that way. So we have, so because our budget is always based on what we've made the previous year, last year, we did have a very successful year. We were able to take the extra money that we made through our fundraisers and give them right back to the school this year. So some areas that we've increased our expenses have been in the grants area. We have really encouraged teachers to apply for grants, especially with our new school. We were figuring that teachers may need new items for their classrooms, or as they implement learning in different ways, especially using technology, they may need some additional materials. So we've encouraged our teachers to really ask us, no matter what, how small or big it is, and we've been able to fund nearly everything that they've asked for this year. Some grants we funded, we've funded drama supplies mainly for the fourth grade, but that's been utilized by our music teacher and our library teacher. We've funded Storyworks and Storyworks Junior for the fourth grade. We helped with the Read-A-Thon books. We purchased those books that the athletes read to the students during the Read-A-Thon, some math manipulatives for one of the third grades. We are helping to fund, because the curriculum has changed this year, and the fourth graders always used to do their wax museum on a biography. This year, they're learning about states instead. So the fourth grade teachers have asked us for some materials to help them still put on their museum project, but with states. And we've also been able to give our library teacher money to fund new books regarding countries, because she thought that her books about countries were sort of dated. So we have been able to fund a whole new set of books about different countries, because I believe the fifth graders are doing a project on countries this year.
Right. That's in collaboration with Sandy Bunzick, who will be running a multicultural event next month, right?
The end of April.
The end of April.
The end of May.
Okay.
So yes, when they were looking at the resources available for the students to report on multicultural events or, you know, just anything that was out there, they found that our books were very, very outdated. So, you know, I remember when we talked about this, they were like, "Oh, it's kind of a lot, but we're so thankful because this is what it's there for." So we were happy to say, "Yes, go get your 40 new books. You know, that's what it's for." So hopefully, those will be coming soon.
We also gave our library teacher an additional chunk of money just for the year anyway, because she has this beautiful new library, and she needed some beautiful new books to put in it. And then finally, we also increased our field trip, our field trip subsidies, because the teachers have been saying that the cost of buses and the cost of field trips in general has just been increasing significantly, especially over the past two years. So we've increased the amount of money that we provide per grade level for the teachers in order to try to keep some field trip costs down for parents.
And then the last thing we've also been able to increase in terms of that area of funding is the classroom funding. Every year, we're able to give back to the teachers and some of the specialists at the school a lump sum of funds, whether it's a check, or last year, we did Target gift cards. So we're happy that this, given what we, how well we did last year, we're able to give more to more faculty this year. So we think they'll enjoy that at the end of the year. In regards to communications, that's our other highlight or our other area that we like to focus on, because we've found if we're doing something well, let's keep doing it. And we've had really great feedback and response from parents and from teachers about our Tuesday Topics Communication. It's our one email from the PTO that goes out every Tuesday. I think we may have only missed one or two.
Special Wednesday edition.
We have a special Wednesday edition. But the feedback we've heard is parents know to look for it. They know they can get everything in that one email. We have what's happening, events that are coming up, Restaurant Nights, the flyers for Restaurant Nights, special visits to the school, fundraising efforts. We also have a fun fact, if you will, and that's various things from what's happening with the Baystate textiles to other things that are happening in the community, and then also an opportunity for volunteers. So that's how we get the word out there from, you know, wherever we need help, the book fair, to the gym teacher needing help building signs, or the librarian needing help. So folks have really been able to depend on that, and we've made sure to keep that going. And I think that will continue to be a consistent communication vehicle going forward.
We have a pretty active Facebook page, too. So between those two things, most people get their information from us that way. And then, we are happy to report that we should have our official nonprofit status by mid-May. Hopefully, May 15th is our goal. We're hoping for that. But that will be a huge relief once that happens.
It's been a very long, laborious process.
Yes, yes. But that will be, that will be great and really open up some doors for us and make things a lot simpler and more streamlined once that happens. So that'll be good.
And that's us.
And that's us.
Any questions?
Committee for questions or comments?
I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work without your involvement. It just, it really helps out the school committee with all that you do. And I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'd like to echo that, too. Thank you so much for all that you do, and it's apparent how wonderfully you work with the administration. And I think not only is it fantastic, the opportunities that you're providing for the families, also to tie it into the curriculum with the literacy aspect of it, it just shows a great relationship, and it's a nice partnership between home and school, and you're helping to bridge that, and we just can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work.
Thank you. Well, we do feel very fortunate. We've been a great little team here. We're going to mix things up a little bit with the board next year, but I do feel like we have a good foundation that we can at least move forward and continue that.
Joan?
Jen and Jen, I'd like to thank you for everything that you've done, and please take it back to all the other committee members, the summits from all the board members here tonight. Just like Patty said, I mean, literacy is just a cornerstone of the child's education. And what you have done by bringing in the athletes from high school, bringing them back in and giving the kids an incentive to read that 53,000 minutes, and you never know where you're going to touch a child, who's going to look at that as a mentor, or maybe someday go into that sport. And sports are so important to the kids. So they'd probably rather do a sport than go home and read a nonfiction book, right? But it's wonderful the way that you're doing that, and I think everything that you're doing for the teachers, staff, especially with the grants that you have going on throughout the year. Because teachers always have to put their budget items, they're already in for next year. But if there's a change in the curriculum or something, or they take a conference, they take the professional development, and then they say, "Gee, we'd love to do this," and teachers spend so much money out of their own accounts, but you are rewarding them in what they're doing and their initiatives and everything to take the curriculum even further. And every child that walks into Peaslee School and all the other elementary schools are the benefits, beneficiaries of what you're doing. And it's nice to know that the money that is raised by the parents in that school is staying in that school. It's not going elsewhere, though you may have some funds going to Algonquin for the after prom or something like that. But they're also your alumni. So, but thank you very much, because it really helps all of us in the administration in budget time, because I'd hate to think if we had to put that money into our budget, what our budget would be. So, but thank you and all your hard work, and I'm sure you started off the school year in October with a lot of enthusiasm, so I would agree with you. It's over with, on to the next spring's year.
Right, exactly.
Thank you so much, Jen.
Well, yeah. Congratulations on a great year, and again, thank you for all that you do, and please convey our thanks to the rest of the board and everyone that participates in the PTO.
Thank you.
And if I could just chime in, I think I heard you say that our events run themselves, and they don't, and I think you all acknowledged it. They run because of these two women, Melanie Palmer in the back, who didn't want to be on camera tonight, but that's okay, and many, many other people that they round up. It's a lot of hard work, and there's nothing that we've asked for that they're not receptive to, and your thoughtfulness and your creativity, I mean, it's brought our school a long way. So we're really appreciative of everything. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great rest of the year.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move on to the Lincoln Street School Improvement Plan. So Jen, you get to stay.
Yeah.
And Jen and Jen, you get to go.
It's the Jen Show tonight.
It is the Jen Show.
for the 2016-17 school year. Linda Broderick, one of our fifth grade teachers who happens to be here supporting us tonight, Lynda Bundenhagen, our Speech and Language Assistant, Sandy Bunzick, our ELL teacher, Caitlin Foley, a fourth grade teacher, Eric Howland, Ann Naris, John Pastizzi, Allison Cullen, and Glenn Watkins, all Lincoln Street parents, and myself. Jen Persons is also kind of an ad hoc member of our council, because we try to keep our numbers even between family members and school staff. And we have Peter Olson here tonight, who's an alumni of the Lincoln Street School Council as well, and he's contributed over the years, too. So I think that the two Jens pretty much did my whole presentation for me, so I'll try to speed it up. But here's our beautiful new school. I just love this picture of it. It's just such a nice representation of what we have and the culmination of so many years of hard work. And just thinking about where we have been and where we are going over the next couple of years is what we'll be talking about tonight. So this is a time when we think about the progress on our goals over the past couple of years. When I wrote out the goals in the last School Improvement Plan, goal number five was the building project, and I thought that tonight, it really deserved to be goal number one, because it was such a long and amazing and successful project, that I wanted to make sure we highlighted the commitment to our school and the part of the community, both the school community and the greater town. So we completed a major addition renovation project. It came in on time and under budget, and in reflecting, it also included three major moves within our school community over the course of two years. We had amazing community collaboration in all phases of construction and occupancy, and I think I heard our town manager say multiple times, "You don't always see a project go like this." So we're very grateful for the way that that all worked out. Two-way communication was another one of our goals, and we've talked about lots of different types of communications that we use as a school to communicate amongst ourselves and with our families. So teachers are experimenting with a lot of different types of communication, including apps, Twitter accounts, focused emails that I send out weekly to families. We now have a student-generated newsletter called The Cub Report. We've updated the way that we do our morning announcements in our school. Unlike some other schools, or really any other school that I've been, and it's always been a tradition at Lincoln Street School, that teachers run the morning announcements. And in the past, we've had teachers scrambling to get up to the main office and who's going to cover my students while I run to the office and work with this group of kids. And now, the way our sound system works and some of our new technology, fifth grade teachers make those announcements right from their classrooms out to the whole school. And we've also, and Mrs. Broderick is one of the teachers who runs the morning announcements. And with an additional component this year, Mr. Olson has been facilitating a video production of our announcements. I remember being asked that a lot when we were getting ready for the new school, "Will you be able to put the announcements on video?" And we've done a lot of experimenting with that this year between Mr. Olson's work and our tech person, Nick Greenwood, and they've done a great job highlighting our students and communicating with our school. We've also reestablished a Lincoln Street School Leadership Team this year, and the purpose of that is to make sure that all elements of the school community, staff members specifically, are incorporated in a group that gets together. We've met fairly frequently this year, almost every week from the time that we brought ourselves together. ourselves together to focus on some goal areas for the year, to focus on some challenges, and to try to create some solutions. Also, under the direction of Rhoda Webb, our ELL director, and Sandy Bunzick, our ELL teacher, we have had some additional outreach to our English language learner families this year, including a coffee that was put together specifically for those families with the goal of helping them become more integrated into the school community and to make connections with one another. And that worked out very well. And we have some other events, including a multicultural night that our PTO members referenced earlier, and an international night that's coming up later this month for the entire district. I think a slide's missing. In terms of curriculum, we have had what I would consider some very consistent curriculum practices. This has been a long time coming and the result of a lot of hard work. But when we look at all of our classrooms at each grade level, specialist areas and special education included, we really have consistency in our curriculum. That's been the work, a lot of the work under Greg Martino and Christine before that. It has been really making sure that we have up-to-date curriculum materials, making sure we have research-based materials that meet the standards outlined in the mass curriculum frameworks. And we've seen a lot of shifts and changes in our classroom. Not that that hasn't been without angst on the part of our teachers. They've had a lot of learning to take in and a lot of work in preparation, but I would say we've made a lot of movement in all the major content areas over the past several years. As part of that, we've also had the support of a number of professional development opportunities through the work of our reading specialists, our in-house curriculum leaders, our reading specialists, and our math coordinator. When we look at the student support goal area, we are incredibly grateful for the hiring of a second school psychologist this year. It, it has been an unbelievably important position. Both of our psychologists are busy at all times, every day. There's not a dull moment, and they've worked collaboratively together, and we've been able to accomplish some things with the two of them that maybe we wouldn't have in the past, specifically in the way that we support students. Together, they've worked on increasing our work with the social thinking curriculum, which I know we've talked about, I think every school has referenced that, ways that we help students problem solve and think about their presence amongst others. We've also continued with different recognition programs in the school to really highlight students who are demonstrating the expected behaviors. Again, that's some of the language from the social thinking curriculum, and really trying to highlight both students and staff members who've gone above and beyond in one way or another. We've talked about promoting joy in learning and trying to make sure that in the midst of all the standards and the MCAS and the rigor of the curriculum, we really want to make sure that we have kids ages five through 11 who want to come through our doors each day and have something beyond what they find in a textbook to excite them and engage them in, in the school experience. So the partnership with Algonquin was such an amazing experience this year. It, it was so well-received by our students. The Malcolm Mitchell, which I'll talk about a little bit later, was an amazing opportunity for our students. Coming into a brand-new building, we began the year with this focus of I Am New, which was a celebration of different cultures. What is new? Who is new? How are we all new together? And how can we support each other in the ways that everybody is new at one point or another? We've implemented, or probably re-implemented, but the first time since I've been at Lincoln Street, a really structured buddy class arrangement, where we have older classes partnering with younger classes. And that, again, whether they're playing board games or writing stories together or teaching each other about maps and directions and climbing Mount Everest, as you talked about earlier today, Linda, the, the kids have so enjoyed getting together with their older peers. And that was something that we actually came up with through the leadership team. And I know that for a number of teachers that thought was, oh, no, one more thing, where, where will we find the time for this? And I think universally, the, the sentiment is, this is well worth the time that we're spending on it. We've also added some new cultural enrichment programs, trying to be mindful of who we're bringing in and what our purpose is each time we bring a group in. So an example this year was some collaboration between the ELL teacher and our music teacher to bring in an African music group that was really well-received throughout the school. With technology, obviously, we are the fortunate recipients of a lot of new technology with the new building. We have, we have, I can't go into a classroom right now without seeing evidence of technology being integrated into the instruction. So whether it's the interactive whiteboards, their document cameras, which is a much more high-tech version of the old overhead projectors, student research projects, the way that students are presenting their learning, every classroom I go in is, is technology-rich, and the students are making the most of what we have, and they're really deriving meaning from what the teachers are doing with technology and what the students are doing as well. We felt the pinch today when we were out of electricity for four or five short hours, and teachers could not use their document cameras and the interactive projectors. Certain things were working with the generator and some things were not. So we had some back-to-old-fashioned chart papers and things like that, and I think a lot of the teachers really realized how much they depend on the things they've saved in their interactive whiteboard files and the document cameras and things like that. So the kids are on the Chromebooks all the time for a number of different reasons. New to LSS, we've broached a lot of different online programs, trying to find the just-right program for the just-right reasons. So we have a number of different things that are being used in our classrooms. We have several different online math programs that teachers have found success with and different purposes for each. The Safari Montage, which allows teachers a wide library of videos with connected activities and learning assessments. That was something new with the building project that we took on. And a consistent typing pal implementation, grades three to five. Number one, knowing that keyboarding is just a really helpful skill. My kids always look at me and say, how do you type that fast, Mom? That's because of ninth-grade typing, when that's all we did was home row and press those keys. So we've been trying to be very careful about getting kids started with typing and keyboarding in a way that will help them move forward with proper technique and things like that. We've really embraced the Google Classroom, especially at grades three through five, and it, it's really afforded teachers a, kind of a real-time connection with their students regarding assignments, giving feedback on assignments, and being able to really manage the student learning electronically and/or remotely. I've talked about some of the other things there. So just kind of reflecting on where we've been, thinking about a year ago, we had ten modular classrooms sitting right on the front of the Lincoln Street property. And for those of you that had been in Lincoln Street while we had the modulators, that first picture on the left is a very long hallway that connected the cafeteria to the modulators. You felt like you were in an airport, one of those little jet, jetways, runways. The kids loved, kids that needed movement breaks loved scootering up and down that hallway multiple times, or running when we weren't looking. And then that hallway connected to the hallway with the, the checkered floors. And that, that's actually a picture, it's probably hard to tell from the back, of when we were actually packing up and getting ready to say goodbye to the modulators. And the last picture that I think resembles a graveyard, which is kind of symbolic, is after the modulators were taken away. That was the remains of the foundation before that got moved. So we were grateful for those, but we were also happy to see them go away. So also, just thinking for a minute about the last couple of years, you know, with a building project, when you're in occupied building, we had times that were great, and we had some things that were challenging. So one of the benefits was we had kind of a temporary staff member in our project manager, Phil Palumbo. He spent the first couple of years of the building project in a trailer out towards the end of Lincoln Street. And then, when the trailers went away, he came back and he moved into our faculty room, where he used that as kind of an adjunct office from September through February. So we definitely got our money's worth out of Phil, and the students loved him, and students loved to go and see him and chat with him. So he was a guest on our community reading day. The middle picture is a group of students and a yo-yo expert standing in front of our new climbing wall in our gym. And while the students had this great assembly, it was one of the better assemblies I think we all agreed we'd ever had, a number of the teachers were not at that assembly because they were back in their classrooms packing up, again, getting ready for their next move. And the picture on the right is memories of our kitchen being closed for all of June and September, as the kitchen was being renovated and lunch lines working out of the main hallway. So we're certainly grateful to have moved on from that. And so thinking about our journey forward into the next couple of years in our new Communication continues to be one of our goal areas, both in our school improvement plan and the district strategic plan. Again, we're looking for consistency in our communication methods. We'll be assessing the methods that we're using as a faculty, and we will be looking to update some of the ways that we communicate, again, thinking about what people have found success with, what parents have found success with, what teachers have found success with, and making sure that we're very clear with families, these are the ways that we will be communicating with you over time. We will be working on the new district website, which I'm sure some of you have seen rolled out just last week or the week before, and we're excited about the new look of that and making sure that we have what we need up there. We'll be working on making sure that we're offering regular curriculum updates with our families. We want to make sure we're supporting our new families. One of the things that came up at our school council was, we have a lot of families that are veterans of our school, and then we have a number of families who are brand-new. And when sometimes we take for granted that this event or that event, they asked for us to maybe be a little more explicit with new families and think about what, how we could make sure that they really understand what's happening at Lincoln Street. So we'll have a little more of a spotlight on making sure they have what they need, including a new student orientation in the summer of 2017. We'll be continuing to work closely with our ELL teacher and Rhoda Webb to make sure that we have everything that we need to support those families and to make sure that we're being respectful of all of the cultures represented at Lincoln Street. And another bullet item there that came out of our school council was really thinking about the way that we run our community service. And right now, the way it works is usually things run through our student council, which is fifth grade. And the suggestion was, could we kind of expand that to have each grade level have a hand in running some of the community service endeavors? And we have many, many community service endeavors at Lincoln Street, and it seemed very reasonable to us as a council that we would include all of the grades and taking some leadership in that area. It's a great lesson for our students. Looking forward to curriculum over the next couple of years, we'll continue to implement the MAPT curriculum, revising our learning experiences and assessment practices as needed. We will continue to offer professional growth opportunities for educators, using our in-house curriculum leaders and outside consultants. We still have work to do in the area of our new reading curriculum. We have work to do in the area of writing and calibrating student writing. Teachers are still becoming familiar with the new version of the Envision Math. We have some new science that we are continuing to work on and become more familiar with. So our work in those areas will be a continuation of a number of things that we've started that, that will still benefit from more attention. We also want to make sure that we are balancing the rigor of the curriculum with the students' social and emotional needs. That would include making sure that we're tapping into all of our in-house experts, some of the outside consultants that are supporting our district, and making sure that we're figuring out what's the right way to approach students, especially those who are struggling, but making sure that we have enough of a balance in our classrooms that the day is, is broken up and they have the right, the right supports when they need them. We've embraced a professional learning community model at Lincoln Street this year, as we have in a number of schools, with really a greater focus on some big ideas, mainly how can we free up teachers? How can we give them time to work together when they're not busy making copies or planning the field trip? But time for them to really sit and place concerted effort on what is, what are we doing in terms of curriculum? What does our student work look like? Do we have students that are struggling across two or three classrooms on a common topic? And how can we come together as professionals and make some changes? So this is the first year that we put together our professional learning communities, and we look forward to more work and maybe some more structures and some more professional development on how we can maximize our work with that next year. So we are in the throes right now of MCAS 2.0, and we're all happily learning about the changes and what it feels like to administer an online assessment to mass numbers of students at once. So as we move through this, I think each day, today was our second day of implementing the online, we learn something different each day. Tomorrow will be fifth grade again, we'll probably learn some more things. But overall, the, the first implementation of that has gone smoothly. Our tech department has done an amazing job supporting us, considering that this has really been a moving target with information coming to the schools from the state, right up, right up to the nth hour. So everyone has really been struggling and scrambling to make sure that we get it rolled out correctly. Our teachers have been working very hard to make sure that kids don't come to school with stomachaches over the MCAS. I think it's actually more the teachers coming to school with stomachaches versus the kids, because our kids are proficient with technology, it's nothing to them, but to us, it's a big shift. So we will need to look at our, our results and information when it arrives, and we'll need to do some planning for next year, once we figure out how it all went this year. We will continue to look at weekly enrichment blocks, and there's a slide that will refer to those coming up. But the enrichment blocks are something that our specialists have offered to our students to allow teachers that time that I referred to earlier for their professional learning communities. So we want to make sure that we continue to work with that. Again, we'll continue to work with our PTO on the many programs that were outlined tonight and probably new ones. And we, we had the beginning, I think all four elementary schools had the beginning this year with our, some of our tech teachers with an after-school Minecraft club, and some of the work that has been done with some of our STEAM, some of the, the grant materials for engineering that we received through the North Row Ed Foundation. So any additional opportunities that we can provide in those areas for students after school, we'd like to do some more exploration with that. So these are just some photos from the Crocodile River Musical Group, and that was a great collaboration between the ELL, our music teachers, and the PTO. We brought in a new enrichment program this year, which I wanted to highlight because it was sponsored by the North Row Cultural Council. It was an engineering workshop, completely hands-on for our fourth-grade students. You can see them working with the, the presenter, and students were given kind of an overview of how machines work, what makes them work, what, how materials can be used to create something that has a function, and then they had time to explore and create. That was a great addition to our school this year. Each grade level, in addition to the regular specials that they have, through working with the collaboration with our specialists, each grade level has had one additional enrichment class. So this year, we decided that music, because of the kindergartner's natural propensity towards music and movement, we thought music would be a great match for our kindergartners, art for first grade. Second grade, they're working with our nurse and our phys ed teacher on a number of wellness topics once a week. Third graders are working on research in the library with Mrs. King. Fourth graders are working, in these pictures actually reflect that, on a new drama program. So our entire fourth grade meets once a week with the librarian and our music teacher. And our fifth grade has chorus. So during these times, or during similar times, during this, during the teacher-scheduled common prep periods, students attend these special subject areas, which has, it's, it's a, I think our specialists have really liked it, because it allows them to do things with the students that they don't normally have time to in their typical curriculum. And for the classroom teachers, the benefit is they have this time to work together collaboratively. The, the pictures on the left and in the middle are, the fourth graders each took a Dr. Seuss book, and they turned it into a skit that they wrote based on the books, and they performed them for the kindergarten through second-grade classrooms. And I liked the last slides, hard to tell, but it's, it's, the fourth graders actually acted out the book and then put the book on the interactive projector so the kids could see the book displayed. In terms of student support, which is our third goal, we are looking through a school scheduling subcommittee at the way to create the most effective and efficient schedule so we can make sure that we have the academic blocks the way that we like them to, to maximize our learning time. We're looking at the way we create our support time for intervention work, our professional learning community meetings, enrichment classes, and safety and wellness. Some of the safety and wellness may include looking at our recess blocks and deciding at some grade levels where the kids are younger, is it better to have them outside twice rather than the ones that we have? and deciding at some grade levels where the kids are younger, is it better to have them outside twice rather than the ones that we have? So we wanted to make sure that we're flexible with our scheduling and that we're putting something together that works for the needs of our students. There will be a district-wide therapeutic classroom. I think Christine has mentioned this in some of our meetings and some of the school committee meetings. But we are looking to support the needs of our students who may have more significant social, emotional challenges. And we're also looking to create a language-based classroom that will meet some of the significant language-based learning needs that some of our students present with. So we're looking to put both of those programs together in conjunction with special education for next year. We want to increase the use of social thinking in each classroom. Professional learning on ways that we can support students' social and emotional growth. We've also talked about piloting lessons designed to enhance empathy on the part of our students. Sometimes we're finding that students aren't always adept at taking the perspective of another person. So we're looking for some curriculum and some materials that will help us share those skills with our students. I think the rest is pretty self-explanatory. So these are just some photos from the buddy classrooms when they've worked together over the course of the year. Technology, I think I've kind of touched on most of these things in some of the work that we've already done. But I think the bottom line is, we're looking to expand our use of technology. We're looking to bring in as much technology as is meaningful and feasible for our students. And we're looking to make sure that our uses of technology are meaningful in terms of promoting students' growth. That's just a snapshot of students working on the video announcements. And Malcolm Mitchell, who came to Lincoln Street this year to promote reading with our students, he got right in there with the kids and it was really a wonderful opportunity. I think he might have enjoyed it just as much as the students did. And it's a tough call. I mean, Malcolm was a celebrity, but so were the Algonquin students when they came to read with us earlier in the year also. And then these, if you've been in Lincoln Street, these polar bears, they're kind of a papier-mache creation. I think there are five or six of them throughout the school. And our ELL teacher Sandy Bunzick had the brainstorm of creating bears, like I think it's the cows in Chicago. And so Sandy created the basic white bears over the summer. And when she brought them in, the students worked in collaboration with the art teacher and Mrs. Bunzick to actually decorate them. So there's one bear was assigned to each grade level. And every student had a hand in some sort of the decorative part of these bears. And now they're spread out all over Lincoln Street. And that's where we are. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up to my colleagues. Any comments, questions?
Amazing. I was just blown away by all that you're doing. It's just amazing, all the, everything that's going on. Truly doing a wonderful job at this school.
I was impressed, and maybe it's happening in all the other schools, is the typing pal. And seeing that you even started it in grades K through two.
We haven't gone K to two yet.
Oh, you haven't done yet, okay.
We have to figure out what will be the appropriate grade to actually start with, but this year, we started in grade three.
Yeah. Because, I mean, I'm like you, when I learned it in seventh grade, you know, the ASL and then whoop, the carriage went. But this is wonderful, yeah, I'm dating myself on that one.
The bell rings.
They're the bell rings. Kids don't even know what that is. But, you know, it's wonderful, because especially when you're going to MCAS. And I've watched students doing it, and when they're still doing the, you know, just two fingers or something, it's like, it's taking so long for them to compose a sentence than if they were handwriting it. So I think anything that we can do for them, and I think this is wonderful, to even start it as early as you can in the grades.
I agree.
But I appreciate, you know, everything that you're doing through your school improvement plan. I mean, you've covered so many different areas, as you said, the STEAM, the literacy, you know, your science, the technology. And I like the idea of the teachers working together, because I think teachers don't have enough time to work together, to collaborate. It's usually in the hall, morning, afternoon, something like that, lunchroom. And you're providing time for them, good content time. And it looks like the kids at the same time are enjoying themselves and learning at the same time. So thank you very much.
That's definitely been a win-win, I think, this year.
That's a great initiative. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you again. I just wonder where you find the time. And I like that you have this study going on and kind of planning to schedule a little bit, because I'm impressed by all that you do.
Thank you.
And the work that you do and finding that time and putting it exactly where it will work best is impressive.
Thank you.
Congratulations on having a wonderful year with your new school. And again, have a great rest of the year.
Thank you.
We plan to.
Thanks.
I just want to thank Jen and her teaching staff. And I'm glad she took us down memory lane a little bit, because when you walk into Lincoln Street School, you can forget that chaos was all around last year as we were planning to re-acclimate to modulars and to different parts of the school. And it's very difficult to keep that positive momentum, that constant focus on teaching and learning each and every day when things are changing so quickly. It's also very difficult to re-establish a culture, a positive climate, when things change at times. But I think that we can be reassured that the continuum of learning, as well as that new spirit of innovation in programming in every aspect of your school improvement plan, is ever-present. And the same with the PTO presentation, it's sort of like a dynamic duo, or the, I think it's now J-cubed. But, you know, to listen to both, it really does demonstrate that you can hold fast to traditions and through great collaboration and work, embrace innovative thinking and make learning fun for kids. And really, that's what it's all about. I mean, even the polar bears are accustomed to their new space, which is nice to see. So, you know, just congratulations, because it's a tremendous amount of work. And it really is a community that recreates that positive climate, and you can feel it. We were there last night, and I were there for a kindergarten meeting. And Maria was so proud, a custodian, everything was locked up tight. And all we had to say was, oh, it's locked right around the building. And this was, you know, nine o'clock at night. And the artwork and the student work that's displayed, it's just so inviting and such a positive feel. So thank you for making that all happen for our kids.
Thank you. Welcome back next month. This is nice.
All right, we'll move on to get some donations to approve.
We do, and, you know, it's a perfect evening to accept these donations. We had a public hearing, and just like the great work of the PTO supports our budget and supports all of those exciting events that we can bring to our students and to our classrooms and provide for our teachers, so do the generous donations and contributions that we receive throughout the year from those folks who are maybe not in our schools, but definitely part of our school community. And we have three donations, right, three donations this evening to vote to accept. There's information on each one in the packet, but I think doing each justice might be having the principals share with us how they made these donations come alive a little bit. And Jen made some reference to the first one, to Michael Vervan's presentation.
Yeah, so I'll just reiterate that a year ago, Michael Veranavon, a Lincoln Street kindergarten parent at the time, called me up and said, "How would you feel about having a New England Patriot come and read at Lincoln Street School?" So, you know, of course, what would you say? Tom Brady, of course, right? So I never thought it would happen. And then he really kept at it, and this year, he came back to us and said, "Yeah, you know, this is really a go." And we're very lucky that he made this connection before the Super Bowl. So because the Read With Malcolm Foundation got very busy the day after the Super Bowl was won. So Michael reached out to the company, he organized everything. Malcolm has his own reading agent, a woman that he had met down in Atlanta who served as kind of a mentor for him. And he came up with an entourage of people. They arrived when they were supposed to arrive. And I will tell you that he read every sign the kids made, every board that was put up. He went and looked at everything, and he was so engaged with the students and what they had to present to him. And the program, you know, we have to really show our complete gratitude to Michael and Northborough Property Management for their really generous donation. Malcolm Mitchell does not come to a school unless a book is purchased for every student. And books are $15.95, and we have a lot of students at the school, and they're traveling here from Atlanta. So it was certainly a very significant donation. But the time that this man spent with us and the passion that he has for reading and the magician that he brought, which tied into the title of the book that he wrote, I had no idea the Patriots had a team magician. So, and I think we were all a little amazed at what these 23-year-old men had accomplished in their lives already. But Malcolm Mitchell's story of how he struggled with reading as a child and even as a college student, and how he turned that around to promote reading for children was really an amazing experience. It was very, very well-received, and we were really grateful for the opportunity. So I do respectfully ask to have the donation accepted.
Do you want to do these as a block or do they all individually?
I think it would do more justice if we did them individually. I'd like to move that we accept the donation of $4,077 from Michael Verandan, I believe did not reach that to that, the president of Northborough Property Management. And I hope that we, I move that we accept and move our face.
All those in favor? Thank you. Move on to the next donation. We actually have two from Peaslee.
Yes, so Peaslee School was approached by a member of the Rotary Club of Northborough just a couple of weeks ago, and the gentleman came in and said, "I would like to make a donation." The Rotary Club does hold an annual pancake breakfast at Peaslee, and he wanted to thank us for hosting that. And came in and he said, "Here you go, we're going to check for $350." So it was a very nice surprise, and certainly we are very grateful for the contribution from the Rotary Club. And we very much appreciate your voting to accept that on our behalf.
Oh, thank you. I move that we approve with gratitude to the Rotary Club in Northborough for their donation of $350 to purchase materials that will support student learning at Peaslee School.
Second?
All those in favor? Again, thank you, Rotary Club.
And we also received a surprise letter from the Pacific Life Foundation informing us that because we have a dad at our school who works for the company, we were eligible for a $1,500 grant, and it required a very short application. And when I was speaking to the mom involved, she said, "That's something fun for the kids." So I said, "Oh, you know, how can you go wrong with that?" So we wrote the grant and requested funding to purchase some robotics for the children. And we are just in the process of narrowing down our choice of which robot to purchase. So the kids will be doing some robotics and coding in the very near future.
Joe?
I move that we approve and accept with gratitude the grant in the amount of $1,500 from the Pacific Life Foundation from Mr. Neil Toll, who is a Peaslee School parent. And the grant will be used to purchase elementary robotics materials to help encourage creativity, communication, collaboration, critical thinking among Peaslee students.
All those in favor? Thank you, congratulations. All right. We have no old business, apparently, so we can bypass that. In your packet, you have the fiscal year '17 monthly general fund expenditure report.
And we will need a vote to approve until audited. I will mention that we are very mindful that there are three months left to expend the FY 2017 budget. As I shared last month, we are keeping a close watch on the bottom line. There are some still expenditures that we have encumbered that may come in less, you know, heat, utilities, things like that. It's hard to predict. Who would have predicted the last winter storm that we had on early April Fool's Day? And so, you know, I think we'll be talking more about where we are next month as we also perhaps learn more about whether we'll be eligible this year for extraordinary relief under circuitry regulations. So we've been talking about this for a couple of months, and next week, well, next month, we'll have a little bit clearer picture in terms of where we're going to find ourselves with our with our bottom line on the 2017 budget. So I just wanted to make that notation, that it is something that we've spoken about, and we will continue to provide an update next month.
I move that we accept the fiscal year 2017 budget as presented this evening as a voluntary first 2017 until this is audited.
Any discussion? Here you go, all those in favor? Thank you.
Enrollments are also in your packet. We continue to find joy in our redistricting model based on the revisions we made to the class size policy that we spent a lot of time collaborating on and communicating about last year. Again, it shifts each month. Some students move in, some students move out. And we know that this is going to happen from now until we open our doors next September or August. The good news is, we have streamlined our registration process with the thanks of Nancy Bisset. We have developed one registration packet that really synthesized all of the individual documents that were somewhat redundant. And now we have a district moving closer to a Northborough registration packet so that when parents come into the school, all of the documents that they need are the same and they're in there. And that means, once we identify their schools, the schools are so advised and apprised, and they send out anything specific to those families, reach out and have a communication with them. So it's another way that we're streamlining the process for parents and for then the turning over of the documents to our schools in, you know, mid-August. So working well, and just watching the numbers.
Two questions. Is full-day kindergarten closed? Or are you still accepting enrollments for full-day kindergarten? Would it only be closed in the sections that have reached the maximum?
So if we look at the projections for next year, we have room at Lincoln. It's two sections, and we've got 39 students. Correct me if I'm wrong, principals, I'm following this list. So we can take 40 students, we have two teachers, and so we have one spot. And so this is really how we're spending our days when we have a family that comes in to enroll, particularly if they are for this year or next year. It's a different question that we ask them, because we have space in some places this year. And certainly, we want to be mindful of what those space allocations would look like next year because of staffing shifts. So it's not such an easy process of saying, "Okay, we have a spot, we're really looking forward to next year as well." And then as we go down there, the list, knowing that kindergarten, the most desirable number is 20 per section. So we've got some good space at Z, and that's about the only place we have room this year at Z. That was the growth area for us last year. Everyone seemed to be moving into the Z district last year. We certainly have room at Proctor. So we are taking kindergarten enrollments, and we are pretty joyful about it.
Full day?
Full day. And half-day as well, right now. We haven't finalized the conversation about half-day. We said that we would be watchful over those numbers. And Sue, I think we were up to 18 last year in half-day. So we still have some movement there as well.
Okay, so my second question is, the pre-K is on the enrollment sheet?
Right.
Is that expected to stay at Z? Because you have a fiscal '18 projection.
Those are numbers that represent the Northborough enrollments. It is not projected to stay at Z. We have had conversations, and in fact, our director of, our preschool coordinator is here this evening. And Marie Allen is here as well. And actually, we have a crew in the audience. We have Jim Randall, a guest appearance from Finn School in Southborough. We are anticipating the move for preschool to Finn. That 25 represents the number of students who would not be typically housed in that Finn. But it does not include the 14 students that we already have at Finn. So those 14 students who are Northborough students appear on Southborough's enrollment because the Department of Education says wherever a child is because the Department of Education says wherever a child is educated regardless of residency, that child number is included in those enrollment stats. So our 14 students, I think that's what our number is, it's fluctuated since we've been doing some research on this, just as our numbers fluctuate, we move ins and move outs, those 14 students are captured on Southborough's preschool enrollment numbers. Okay, so that number represents students that would otherwise be attending Z if we did not make the decision this year to move for educational reasons. Many of the reasons were mentioned during Jen's presentation about the ability to collaborate, students and teachers and so forth. So, and you know, I don't know how much of a discussion we want to have on this at this point, but that 25 is not representative of the numbers of students that are already over at, in Southborough. Okay, so there's about 14 right now and I don't mean to be vague, but it does fluctuate.
Certainly. We have that understanding with all of the numbers, constantly fluctuation.
Absolutely.
We've seen the, the ins and the outs and we know the numbers.
And so I just want to add something more about preschool. It's a little bit of an interesting challenge with projecting enrollments because unlike the history that we have, kindergarten students moving into first grade, we can project based on numbers that we already have in place. So for preschool, a lot of the students are still being, you know, meetings are being held with parents and decisions are being made. So that number is not so much a constant as we see in the other grades where we've sort of got a historical enrollment to base that on. And I know that students are still registering and decisions are still individually being made with children, so, and families. So I anticipate that the number could go up and it could go down.
I think that's very valuable information since even the ones that are currently housed at Finn are Northborough, so that's, correct me if I'm wrong, funding is coming out of the Northborough?
Correct.
Budget. I don't know how my fellow committee members feel, but I would love to see that number reflected somehow, maybe in a different format, maybe not as it is here, but the overall number of pre-K students that are provided with some kind of, in a similar way that we have a pre-K number here. I would love to have that captured and reflected on our room.
So I'm glad you raised that because that was part of a discussion as we were trying to assess what the numbers were and where the students were. And so I think it's important to note that if, if that is the wish of the committee, that's easily done with a footnote. Because in fact, when districts engage in a collaborative relationship as we have since 19, history tells me 1996, when Southborough students were housed in South, Northborough schools for preschool, the Department of Ed has a special coding. And when we submit our SIMS data, student information data, which we do twice a year, October 1 and in March, three times a year and then at the end of June, any student who is receiving an educational experience in their non-resident town and under which there's a collaborative agreement between the two towns, the Department of Education codes it as waived tuition collaborative agreement, as we've enjoyed for 20 years now. If we're going to show that, then there are other grades and programs where we share resources and maximize the experience for students. And I think then we might want to look at all of that and footnote that because it is important information. So just as a Northborough student would be coded as a Southborough participant in their educational experience, we do have Southborough students in our program too and they would be coded 09s because they would be housed here and educated here. So I'd be happy to do that and I think it would be important to show on the bottom. So thank you for bringing that up. Very valid point.
I think, I agree with Patty's idea. I think it would be very helpful to have that because when I look at this right now and I see pre-K 30, I'm thinking that's 30 Northborough students.
It is, but there's 14 more.
But 14 housed in Southborough.
In Southborough currently.
Southborough, okay.
But they're Northborough residents.
Now, it says that there, for those 30 students, there's only one teacher.
We have one preschool teacher in Northborough and Sue can speak to this more eloquently because she has the actual experience. And so that teacher is able to offer
Three classes.
Three sessions and that's very different than in Southborough right now because there are three teachers teaching preschool in Southborough. So what we have in, in, in South, in Northborough is a four-day, a three-day and a two-day. Afternoon sessions for the most part on the three and two-day and morning sessions on the four-day. So that one teacher is sort of unto herself at Z School.
Yeah, and that has been the history. We've had a four-day morning class Monday through Thursday, a Monday, Wednesday, Friday afternoon class and then a Tuesday, Thursday afternoon class, but it's one teacher who teaches all three different classes. And there are different age groups and there are different goals for each class based on student population. That's there. I think one thing that Mrs. Johnson alluded to is the changing number of students and that's based on when children turn three. So when a child turns three and they're identified as being eligible for special education, we need to find a place for those students. And our classes in Northborough are tight in terms of enrollment, so inevitably there are decisions to have students go to attend classes at the Finn School. There's a, there's more space there, there's more opportunity for different types of classes there. So it's been a great partnership, but it does create this big group over here and the one island over in Northborough. And as Mrs. Johnson said, a bulk of the students who are currently enrolled in preschool are already and have been attending school over at the Finn School, so.
What would be the average number that that teacher has in a session?
I think it's about 12 or 13.
12 or 13?
So we have exact numbers.
I think that's about, I mean, if, again, it fluctuates at the beginning of the school year, it's smaller because we haven't fully filled the class, but it, you know, right now, the four-day class is at 13, the three-day afternoon is at 13 and the two-day afternoon is at 10.
And it's safe to say the cap is basically 15?
Yes.
With a bound student.
And it is
Cohorts.
One contained space, so when you have 15, you know, 13, 14, 15, three, four-year-olds in one space, there's a lot of activity there. So I think just having, having, you know, having more space and more opportunity works.
Well, I applaud you because I think that anytime in schools, even in busing, as Cheryl will know, the scheduling is, can be a nightmare. And I think, you know, taking this staff that you have and working with the scheduling and doing what you're doing like you do the four, the three, the two-day is wonderful and it is, it's, it's hard to get all those, you know, pieces together, but I think you're, at the same time, as all teachers are and all administrators sitting here tonight, you're doing what's best for the students. So I really applaud you for reaching these students as soon as possible and giving them the extra support that they need at the earliest time of their developmental growth. Thank you.
So do you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
Not. It's an exciting topic. We can talk for hours.
Yes, we can.
At this point, I do not.
Do you have the bunch calendar in there? As Ms. Johnson mentioned, we have town meeting.
Town meeting. Monday after vacation, something to look forward to.
April 24.
Very exciting.
We hope to see everyone there.
And tonight in the packet, you have the approved budget that was read into the record in a dense format for public hearing.
And obviously there'll be copies of this at town meeting for
Yes, and the public hearing document as well.
Yep. Educational policy, we have no at this time, but we do have some policy development and/or distribution.
Correct.
So we have a couple of first readings. You've got two in the packet for I-110, promotion of retention of students, and J-140 for student behavior.
So with the first readings, as always, if that's what it is, the first reading, if it's the will of the committee, we can take it up for consideration at this time or it's coming back next month. It has been reviewed by council. You can see that there's been some edits that have been made through the great work of the subcommittee, so.
If it's the will of the committee, we can table these for next month or if you want to read them now, we can, if they're better by council. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to read these. Okay. Then let's, let's leave it. Let's wait a month.
Next month.
So let's table these for next month. But we do have
Good news.
For distribution, so we do have some to add to your binders.
The virtual binder, I think is fast becoming, right? Even better.
So we can add those.
I again want to thank the committee on J-300. Now, we went back and forth, but this is a complex topic and I think the time on developing this policy was well spent.
Good to have. All right, so we'll cut to audience sharing. So if, it will be the preamble, if anyone in the audience has anything that they'd like to share, anything of interest for the committee, anything of interest for the community, please just grab the microphone and welcome.
Good evening. My name's Helen Clark. I'm a mother of a fourth, fifth and sixth grader and unfortunately, my fourth grader did not go to school this year in the district because she's being shipped to Rhode Island due to her dyslexia and other learning disabilities that were not met. We were met with a lot of pushback and not a lot of support from the former Director of Student Support. On my journey, I did meet a lot of talented teachers who tried their very best, but they were not trained or supported properly from the administration. So in this system of failure for the children as opposed to early intervention, my daughter kept falling and falling backwards, so we had to intervene legally. The school committee, not the school committee, the school settled out of court for obvious reasons. And I was really disturbed at how I had to spend my money and how the school spent money to fight me on something that was obviously broken. I encourage the superintendent and the current student support to be on the right side of this argument and to do this properly when you do start these language-based in other classrooms, that it not be done as it is in the current state. I hope I find you on the proper side of this argument. I have to say, I've been very disappointed with the schools, but as opposed to just walking away, I, I feel that I owe it to the other children who are left behind for this to be fixed. And I hope that everybody will come together and do the right thing for these kids and spend the money properly. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Anyone else in the, in the audience? All right, we'll move to our principals.
So our spring fair was moved to this coming Saturday due to the April Fool's Day snowstorm, so we decided to err on set of caution and made a decision to move it on Thursday, so there's opportunity to attend if anyone's interested in coming. We also have a need of some more volunteers, so if anyone wants to volunteer to run popcorn machine or product craft, there's opportunity there. Mr. Martin is looking like he might want to volunteer for that. We also have a return from vacation, Community Reading Day, which I know all of the elementary schools are participating in. We'd love to have some more community readers join us, so if there's folks out there that, you know, want to just, you know, meet with children for an hour, share their love of reading, share a story, we're still looking for volunteers at all of our schools, so we welcome that as well.
I think my item is under communications. It's a video clip from Class Act on Channel 7. We have, as most of my colleagues do, a strong tradition of community outreach for a variety of projects. Last year, we moved to working with Project Linus as a school-based activity and tied about 50 blankets last year that we donated to UMass for the Children's Ward. This year, two of the Girl Scout troops that are associated with the Z School wanted to partner with us, one in particular where they worked with their troop, but then also worked at the school with Sue Berger, our school nurse, and we have put together almost over 200 blankets that have gone to different hospital settings. We were contacted by Channel 7 a few weeks ago, somebody had nominated the Scout Troops and Sue Berger for Class Act, so we were pleased to host a little production team at the school. They put together a clip and ran two weekends ago on Channel 7, which was very exciting for us. So we do have a clip of that. I don't know how to, I don't know where that is.
We'll find it.
You'll find it.
We'll find it.
You have the link in the minutes, so I just wanted to call your attention to that. Our kids across town engage in lots of community service activities and it's great when we have the kids and the schools partner up on things, so I hope that you'll take a moment to take a peek at that.
Definitely do that.
I wanted to mention that we've had a little bit of a focus on the design process this month at Peaslee School and our second graders designed leprechaun traps. Unfortunately, or perhaps fortunately, we have not been successful in catching any leprechauns at our school, but we thought we saw some signs that some of them had been there. And today, we did successfully have fifth graders who cleaned up an oil spill. It was not an accidental oil spill, it was an oil spill on purpose so that they could explore this problem-based learning and we were very excited about that. And as Alana said, we are very excited about Community Reading Day that's coming up and our community service project for this month is a food drive because we were made aware that the shelves at the local food pantry are quite there right now. So we have been running a food drive and we are very impressed and pleased with the amount of food that's been donated already just within the first few days of the drive.
That's great. Thank you.
I've had my turn.
You had your turn.
Well, there are a few things I wanted to mention. Just like everybody else, we started with our MCAS 2.0 today. It was our launch using Chromebooks, many of which we were donated by the NEF, so we're very grateful for that. 210 sixth graders tested today, ELA session one, and only three students were absent, so it went great. It was the first, first time, so a special thanks to TJ, Karen and Jen Trembino, our tech staff for really helping everybody's anxiety level stay manageable, so it was successful. We learned some things, so we'll make a couple of changes for tomorrow, but it went great. So that was exciting. Our baseball, softball and track seasons are starting and we're excited about that. We'll be more excited when the fields dry out, but it's nice to see the kids running around and doing all that stuff. We have over 100 students sign up for track this year, very excited about that. And one more thing I wanted to talk about was our musical, Beauty and the Beast Junior, which ran March 24th and 25th. Over 80 students participated. We sold over 1,300 tickets, so two nights, really, really exciting. Special thanks to Algonquin for letting us use their facilities and to our directors. One of them is in the audience, Melissa Jamison, so I thought I would, if we have time, you could show the pictures.
Absolutely.
All right, let's get a phone, Melissa. Oh, you're going to hook it up? Great. I thought you might need Jen. One of the things that's really nice about our musical is that our, our parents help with costumes and scenery and all that, so it becomes a real community event.
I mean, I could, I could talk, sure.
Technology has a mind of its own sometimes.
Here it comes, slowly.
It's like the old Polaroids that, you know, it's a shakeup, they kind of come into focus.
So we had close to a hundred students that auditioned to be in the musical and we only can safely take about eighty that can fit on the stage at Algonquin all at the same time. So the auditions went great and throughout the months of January, February, and March, we practiced, or rehearsed, I guess is the right word. And these are some of the photographs that Jen McNeil, who's a parent of a high schooler, took for us. And the following pictures that come are from parents that took photographs throughout the play. So these are some of the lead roles that we had. And parents helped make all the costumes and a lot of the props and some of the scenery, which was a great help, and we really couldn't have done it without them. So here we go. That was from the fight scene with still air in those. Teapots fought the villagers. And that's it.
Wow.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Melissa, would you mind, I emailed you the link of the Class Act.
Yeah.
Would you mind playing?
You want me to share that? Oh, great. I would love to.
While you're on stage.
I don't know if I'll have the, I don't know.
Don't you allow your password.
My Adobe is not up to date. Hold on, let me see if I can get it through.
We thought we'd introduce a little of technology into our school committee meetings going forward to.
Call grace under pressure.
This is our first attempt.
A little bit of live emailing.
A little bit of entertainment and celebrating our students in a very visual way.
To say I might start singing Be Our Guest. It's coming through my head right now.
I did sing it over the announcement.
Oh, you did?
It wasn't pretty, but I did try to generate some excitement.
While we're waiting for that, you also have the distribution of the school newsletters in the packets.
Can I add something under audience sharing?
Please, yeah.
So we will be hosting on May 1st a parent forum sponsored by Student Support Services. We held at Algonquin. More information will be sent out to the school community. And really, it is to invite parents to share topics that they would want us to, you know, speak to and present about. And so Marie's spearheading this and it will be in the evening. We did receive feedback that it's, you know, important to flex those times so that we're meeting all of the needs of our student, of our parent population. So that information will be coming and it really is parent open forum. We're excited about offering this opportunity for parents to share with them, with us, agenda topics, and then we'll be sending out a more formalized agenda before the meeting is held. But it is May 1st. It will be at Algonquin and I think we, six-thirty to eight-thirty.
Didn't mean to truncate audience sharing. Did any of my colleagues have any, well, we have, we up yet?
Well, I did want to add that I did attend Beauty and the Beast. It was fantastic. I thoroughly enjoyed it. It was a very excellent, excellent presentation, excellent performance. And congratulations to Mrs. Getchel, Mrs. Jamison, and the other teachers here that assisted with that. Did a great job and it was a really wonderful.
I second that. I was there too. I was just amazed. I saw them, I'm like, are these really eleven to fourteen-year-olds? I was like, no way. You watched them and they're just so well-prepared. The teachers did an excellent job preparing them as well, and I just thoroughly enjoyed watching the play and hopefully this inspires a love of drama for those kids when they go on. Maybe they'll be drama hawks one day and move on to high school and I love that they had the opportunity to experience that.
Great.
I think we're ready. The one nice thing with this is that the troops included some girls from the Proctor School, so we made, Mrs. Seer and I collaborated to make sure that they were part of the program over at Z-School, so. So now a word from our sponsors. I'd love to have some.
Unexpected moment.
Class Act, and today we are recognizing two Girl Scout troops as well as the Z-School in Northborough. They have created and donated hundreds of blankets for the Linus Project, which gives these blankets to children at local hospitals. Seven's Krista Delcamp shows us why they are this week's class act.
And there's all different kinds of blankets for all different kinds of ages. These girls from the Z-School in Northborough get pretty talkative when it comes to blankets.
They're really comfy.
The girls are from two different Girl Scout troops in town, Troop 11594 and Troop 11596. Together and with the help of the school, they made and donated more than two hundred and twenty blankets for kids.
What I liked best is like the thought, not just because it was fun, but the thought of like kids are gonna get these blankets.
I was thinking of helping people out in the hospital so that they have a warm hug.
All of these blankets are part of the nationwide nonprofit Project Linus, which has delivered more than six million handmade blankets to kids in need since 1995.
They are so excited. So one Girl Scout troop will be donating it to the pediatric unit at UMass. And the other Girl Scout troop is doing it directly to Project Linus.
And because of all their hard work and effort, the Z-School and both Girl Scout troops are our class acts.
I wasn't expecting an award, but I just want to make the kids happy.
Northborough had created blankets for Project Linus before, but just recently, the idea was resurrected by school nurse Sue Berger and has more than quadrupled in two years.
I think the kids could have done a thousand blankets. But what I got out of it was the conversations around making the blankets was amazing. They talked about these kids and their compassion and empathy for them.
I liked that we not only got to make the blankets, but we also got to give them to people who needed a warm hug.
I don't care about me, I just care about them being happy.
Because Project Linus in Northborough was such a success, the school and the Scouts are planning on doing it once again next year. In the newsroom, I'm Krista Delcamp, Seven News.
Great story there. If you know a student between sixth and twelfth grades doing something outstanding in school.
So the nice part with that was that each of our, many of our teachers prepped the blankets outside of the school day and then they were distributed around the building so that every, pretty much every single student in the building helped with tying the blankets. So it's become a great project and we're pleased, we're so thrilled with the kids and definitely appreciative of Sue Berger's initiative with that. So thank you for watching our little video.
Congratulations to the school. Thank you. Do you have anything else?
Just one thing. You know, we're talking about wearing, I'm, we talk about like we're all worried about MCAS and all that, but I think in what we've seen here tonight, you know, the empathy that the girls have had under, you know, for the students and they're speaking from the hearts there on TV. And, you know, even the drama, it's wonderful and, you know, you just extend so much. It's just not the MCAS. It's just, there's other things that make a whole child to be a good learner and a good citizen, so thank you for everything that you've done to do that. It just shows in these extra little things, but very special things. Thank you.
And it's Friday, it is Team Tribute Night, so seven o'clock at the Doubletree in Westboro. We'll see you all there, many of you. So it's gonna be a great night again for the Northborough Foundation. And I think there are still a few tables open for teams, but go to northboroughed.org and register your team. Everything's all on the website, so.
Bring it on.
Friday night. All that useless knowledge that you have in your head.
There's a lot of it up there sometimes.
So now we can get into communications. We've got the school newsletters, we've got the district doing, so that's all in there. We're looking at a May meeting, so
Unbelievable, May.
We have some future agenda items. Hopefully, we'll be celebrating the passage of the budget at town meeting. We have school choice, public hearing, and vote. We have the Melican PTO, school approval plan. Do you have anything else that you have going on? As things come up, obviously, send an email out and we'll, oh, go ahead.
We do. They're in communications. There's an envelope in front of you. I think Jen mentioned it briefly. That is an invitation from Rhoda Webb, Director of ELL in the district. And this is going to be a very exciting night. She talked a little bit about it yesterday at one of our meetings. And it's all about celebrating the differences and the diversity that we have in our district. And there'll be lots of food, so what other better way to get together and to celebrate one another? And this is yet another initiative that Rhoda is spearheading to really engage and invite the greater community to come together and just share in what makes each one of us very special. So it's a first adventure and I think we're all looking forward to being there that evening. So you have an invitation. And Sue, I think it was someone, Jen, was it your teacher that put the?
Sandy Bunsen's invitation.
Sandy Bunsen, yes, that's an original work by one of our very own teachers. She does polar bears and invitations.
She's very talented. She really is.
I can attest to that.
And we may have two policies to vote on, so if you read up, we'll discuss, at the very least, discuss those next month. All right, anything else? All right, how are the team?
I move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to discuss strategy with respect to corporations. It's true that the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter is in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee. We have no intent to return to open session.
Any discussions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Yes, we'll call.
All others, we'll call. That's right.
Yes, yes, yes.
And yes. So thank you very much. See you, town.